We're going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Tompkins. Mr. Heidemann.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Rushing.
Here.
Mr. Greitop.
Present.
Chairman Bone.
Here.
Item three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to add the change order review wetlands, boardwalk to 11R.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, the minutes of the previous meeting, items A and B.
I make a motion to approve and file the minutes of eight seventeen seventeen commission meeting and the nine five seventeen standing committee meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Items six A, we've got two proclamations, proclamation celebrating the hundredth year anniversary of the St. Clair County Library Service.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to present that at the library one-hundredth anniversary party next Friday. So I will read that at that particular time.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move the approval of the proclamation celebrating the hundredth anniversary of the St. Clair County Library Service.
Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there any people left, Howard, when you guys started?
Just a couple of people.
Item B, proclamation recognizing Sally Strathen for years of service.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the proclamation recognizing Sally Strathen's years of service. Support.
I don't, she's not here, that's gonna be right into later date, okay, we'll get that to her. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Moving on, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, uh, hang on a minute, I've got it. Too many dog papers up here. Here they are. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I moved approve items seven A through seven F on the consent agenda. Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Item eight, reports of standing in special committees. Mr. McConnell?
No, thank you.
Howard?
At this time.
No, sir.
Yes, just one, you all received the master plan from Riley Township and it went through the transmission Monday night.
Nice.
The county did an excellent job on that.
Okay.
I would just like to congratulate Riley and Dave's part of getting that done, and that's all I have.
Okay, I got a couple things here, St. Clair End, a lot of you know that, I've been, county's been involved in a lot of different facets of that, that project is actually underway now. We had a public hearing for it last Monday regarding the tax abatement, it was approved at the city council meeting, they had one of the owners that was in just to talk about it. You look at these projects, the St. Clair End, they took possession of that on December twenty-eighth of fifteen, we had our first meeting sometime in February of sixteen. You look at the recent brownfield projects that have happened throughout the county, you've got the Marine City Hotel project, you've got the Convention Center project, you've got Sperry's, those are three examples of projects. Marine City Hotel arguably went the smoothest, and that took a year and a half, right, Convention Center was three years. Many of you know, Sperry's project took a long time too, that was kind of a five or six-year deal. So you look at what you have today, though, with those particular projects, so I know there hasn't been a lot of action or activity on the front end of the St. Clair End, so of course, everybody's pretty antsy down there. I reported out the last time, the kind of monies that have been spent, it's roughly a million dollars to date. Now, you have to put a lot of front-end money up to get back-end money, okay? But they are, you know, down there tearing that sucker up, moving along, it's roughly a thirty-one point three million dollar project, fifteen-month kind of timeframe. They have a signed agreement with Marriott, one of the, one of the individuals was questioning the Marriott agreement at the, at the St. Clair meeting the other night, the owner of the St. Clair End emailed me that particular agreement, signed document, I was able to share that with some of the other city council members, so this thing's for real, it's alive, it's moving. Greenwood Township, myself and Commissioner McConnell attended a meeting last night talking about windmills, as you well know, the county facilitated a couple meetings, the different township supervisors, to really identify communities that have an interest in even the potential investment. And when it comes right down to it, Greenwood Township is, has the right amount of air, you know, and the right characteristics for potential development. They had a gal, Sarah Mills, from University of Michigan, talked a little bit about that, she's done extensive work, I've been founded by the Mott Foundation to go around talking to these different communities that have these wind farms, so she talks the good, the bad, and, you know, people's perceptions, very interesting, you know.
A lot of surveys, she, she does these surveys, and she got about two thousand responses back, which is, which is huge, she said it's because she put two dollars in each envelope to have people fill them out, but obviously it worked, and it was, how do you feel about, so they broke the survey down, as far as, are you a paid person, right, are you receiving some money and royalties from either a direct tower on your property, or just because you're a neighbor or adjoining property? And they have unpaid and paid, and it's, it's surprising how close they really are. I didn't think there was anything, it wasn't alarming, like there was ninety percent of the people said, oh, this is tragedy and we shouldn't have it, so it was kind of a, you know, sixty forty deal, sixty percent, didn't think it was much of an issue, forty percent, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, and this guy, and this gal spent a couple years upping the thumb, knocking on doors, I mean, this was a major research project that wasn't completed, this wasn't just, you know, some phone-in fifteen-minute thing, later then Detroit Edison came in and made a presentation, remind you, Detroit Edison does not have a windmill project in St. Clair County, they came to talk, to explain the sighting, I know a lot of, you know, you guys saw it, and we talked a little bit about the taxing piece of it from the county's perspective, you know, there's a hundred million dollars in SEV, gets depreciated down to thirty million over a ten-year period. We don't get those kind of home runs, come, don't come along on a taxing, and now granted that people gotta live with them and look at them out there, that's for them to debate, but you're gonna hear a little bit more on that, we're just trying to essentially help facilitate, do you want it or don't you want it? Answer the question, fine and dandy, you know, move on, at least we, you know, can, can do that with Detroit Edison, they are a major taxpayer, twelve percent of the entire SEV in St. Clair County is DT holding, so they're a large employer, a large taxpayer, so, you know, we're working that. The animal control, I'm gonna actually take that up in unfinished business tonight, that's gonna, that's a five-minute-long schmeal here for me, is kind of some ideas I have for next steps moving forward, but that is my report. So we're gonna move on to citizens wishing to address the board, Shavana Hernandez, four-eight three-six Westwood Drive, Clyde, Michigan, Animal Control.
Hi, gentlemen, you guys all know me, my name is Shavina, I let you guys know at the, one of the last meetings, that, you know, I was involved in the protests, and I've been involved with this protest that came by just the other day, and I gotta say the Lapeer, Lapeer Road, roadwork really kind of helped out, so I wanted to say there was a lot of members that aren't informed in this county, that is what's going on. I applaud you on the upcoming, there's an upcoming adoption event, I'm glad to hear that, there's also a, supposedly, a change with the intake of some animals, I applaud that, I really am glad to hear that. My thing is, and what a lot of the community members want, is they want permanent changes, we have seen some of these changes before, we have seen them do different things that make it look better for quite a while, and they stick around for about a good six months. We want these things in writing, we want in a director, that's it, a qualified director, not a name tag slapped on somebody that's already in there, unfortunately. There's lack of proper education, proper qualifications for a county director. One thing that a lot of the community members that I spoke to, and I will continue to speak to, I will not go away, is why do you gentlemen feel that our county does not deserve somebody qualified for a position that can be so important to our county? Lot of the questions were, why do they feel a mechanic would be good for a heart surgery? It wouldn't. An office manager, and I'm not saying a bad person or anything, does not have the qualifications of a director, of an AC director, the qualifications that are needed. I think that the changes that are coming are positive and good, it does, just because some people disagree does not make us negative, does not make me negative. I see what all you guys do throughout the counties, and I talk to each one of your different constituents, and I'm going to continue to talk, and my job now is community awareness. From this point on, every community member in here, if it takes me two years to knock on every door, to get together at every little meeting, if I am the only one standing out there, this is a beautiful community, I love living here. This community gave me a second chance after a divorce and a new life ten years ago, and I'm proud to be here, I'm proud to be a member. And you know what, this community deserves a qualified director in a position that can honestly change the face of AC. So, I mean, it's really up to you guys, there's, and I, I'm not gonna sugarcoat things, I don't, I don't believe in that, I believe in honest, straightforward, God-given facts, and guess what? Couple years, elections are coming, guys.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks.
A couple years, elections are coming, and by the time that time comes, there will be a lot more members that know about what's going on. So the things that have been in the past are not gonna stand anymore, the people that have hurt this community, those people are, they're, the community's starting to realize, and they're not gonna stand, so I hope you guys really take it into heart, so I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you, guys.
Next up, Susan Atwater, four-one-three Bots, reporting here on Transparency Policy.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
I seem to come up every month and give packages. This week, or this month, I'd like to talk about transparency in the policy. In the animal welfare, many experts speak of the need of the animal shelter to be forthright about their operations, the need for transparency and honesty, and all shelters must be adhered to, and is no more important than the agencies that have high kill rates such as animal controls, not just ours, there's many more. There's an article that I gave each of you, and it talks about a story from Philadelphia Animal Control. You see, they have an extremely high euthanasia rate. They were on target one day to put down over seventy animals, and the waiting room was still packed with people that were wanting to relinquish their pets. A young man had a kitten in his hand, when the director came out and announced that because they were currently full, most of the animals that were being turned in that day would be The young man stated that he didn't want that kitten killed, and that's why he was there, was to seek help. After working with one of the foster coordinators, young man decided to foster that kitten, and it was later adopted. He also ended up being a volunteer at that shelter, which saved more lives than just that kitten. You see, being open and honest saved more lives that day than just that kitten, letting the public know the good, the bad, and the ugly is the only way to get them behind you, and to get the support that everyone's going to need to make the changes. Letting the public know what established rules are is part of being transparent. Policies, I know there's supposed to be some, I would love to know what my rules are when I go there, and I have been there many times. My question is, is how long is it going to take to get them? I've also provided each of you with a handout from the St. Clair County handbook, it talks about who's supposed to write these policies, and who's supposed to approve them. You see, I applaud the changes that are currently going on, because I talked to both, almost all the groups. I think that they're doing a great job on working to go forward, but there's no foundation. How can you build a house without a foundation? If you don't have that foundation, any change that you make is going to fall apart. Thank you.
Iris, one zero seven five Hart Huntington Wood, AC.
Good evening, gentlemen, I'm taking a different tone tonight, and what I've brought you is the work product from another county, and the interesting thing about this work product, this is, I've given it to most, or some of you anyways, is that the same week that I came up here to work with you was the week that Deb Schutt went up to work with this particular county. So they've been working for the same amount of time, a year, a little more than a year, and this is what they've come up with to improve the shelter. Now, they started with a different attitude, I mean, they went, oh, wow, you know, here are some experts who are gonna help us, let's jump right in and do it. So let me tell you what happened up there. By the way, it's redacted, some of it's redacted, because it hasn't gone before this particular board yet, this is just a rough, it is gonna go before the board this month. So what happened is, they formed a committee, and those of you who have this sheet can see that the committee is made up of animal control, Humane Society, interested stakeholders, all different people formed this committee, and those of you, I hope all of you have the table of contents, because this is actually what they came up with. So let me just go through, the first thing they did, and I hope we would do it also, is they referred to the Guidelines for Standards of Care for Animal Shelters produced by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians, then they all reviewed the National Animal Care and Control Association Guidelines, excuse me, and I think I've mentioned before, that it's never necessary to reinvent the wheel, that these things are out there for us to access. The next thing they did was review all the statistics from the shelter for the past six years, and those of you who have the whole packet, see the charts and things that they've developed, and they reviewed the charts, and that's how they set their priorities. Now, this is this county, but it would be helpful if we did it in St. Clair. So after they set their priorities, and you can see them, those of you who have the table of contents, the committees got to work over a period of months, this didn't happen right away, and what they did was they set up an initiative for each priority, who was going to be responsible for it, and the cost, and let me say, for those of you who are reviewing, many of these are low-cost or no-cost solutions, none, so saying that you don't have the money to implement is not appropriate. Next in the packet are priorities that will be taken up after these are attended to, excuse me, the last thing, and I'm not sure St. Clair will ever do this, Dr. Fortenaw, who is a consultant with Michigan Pet Fund, goes and does shelter assessments, and he literally went to this county.
I'm sorry, you'll have to close your remarks.
Almost done, and did an assessment, and that's at the end of the packet, let me tell you that those assessments are appropriate for anybody, so anybody who wishes to share any of this with St. Clair County, please go ahead. The problem is, it's not St. Clair County, this is a different county, so thank you so much. And by the way, this is real shelter improvement.
Sheila Haggedon, six-three oh seven State Road, Lakeport, Part-Time Benefits.
Good evening, and I, first of all, I'd like to thank all of you for everything you do, it's very much appreciated for the county of St. Clair. My name is Sheila Haggedon, and I've been with St. Clair County Health Department now for over eight years, and I'm here to talk about part-time benefits for all part-timers. I know years ago, there were benefits, and they were taken away, and I believe that my thoughts, my opinion, is that they should come back.
If you could, I'm a little, talking to Mike.
I'm sorry, I don't speak publicly very often, so.
My guy's got hearing aids.
That's okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. I've been at St. Clair County Health Department, I'm an account clerk too, and I do billing, and I do, I do enjoy my job, but, and I appreciate that I have one, but I would like the board to hear my thoughts and concerns, I believe it's unfair for part-time employees to receive no paid time off for sick or vacation. We work beside other part-time employees such as nurses, they get vacation, we don't. I work twenty-eight hours a week, which comes to like nine and a half hours less than the full-timer that's right next to me, and they, I receive zero pay, and if I need a sicker vacation day, I have none. This past January, I was off two weeks with pneumonia, and I can count on my hand, in eight years, how many times I've been off work sick, and it was more than five days. So with no pay, it was very hard, not only physically, but emotionally and financially as well. I would like, it would be a benefit, I believe, for you to give some type of part-time benefits, because it would be incentive to get more part-time people in, because that's the wave of the future, to get more part-time employment, so you don't have to pay the big benefits. Many other employers in St. Clair County give their employees sick and vacation time, such as community mental health, if you're there a hundred and eighty days, they will give you a week's paid vacation for a year, and they also start accumulating sick time. The hospitals in the area also give something to part-timers. I'm asking the board to please, that the board that I voted in, to please consider giving some type, I'm not asking us to have, you know, what the full-time employees is, but to accumulate something for sick pay or vacation. I don't believe it's unreasonable, as we work just as hard as the full-time employees, and I feel we deserve something, anything is better than nothing, we do not receive anything, in my opinion, it would be only fair and honest thing to do, but we would also feel as we're being treated equally and appreciated as well.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks.
Thank you for your time.
Debbie Morgan, speaking for Vicki Rich, one-two-nine-three Dunn, Part-Time Employees.
of all, I would like to thank you for the important work that you do. Although I know you understand the importance of the services we provide, part-time employees feel less valued and deserve benefits of full-time staff. I speak from having over thirteen years with the county as a part-time employee, and have not received full-time benefits. I have a lot of passion for my job, and have held on waiting and hoping that the county will see a need for a full-time position in my current program. Over five years ago, the county eliminated the full-time position and hired a new part-time staff. I have seen this happen in many programs as employees retire or leave. Although it has been a struggle, I'm a dedicated employee and have a lot of passion for my work. Please consider the following benefits to be offered to part-time employees. Pro-rated vacation days after probation period or years employed, earned sick time after probation period or years employed, insurance offered after probation period, holiday pay offered after probation period. I believe it would be a benefit, the county, I believe it would benefit the county to give all part-time employees sick and vacation benefits. Having incentives to apply for county positions and stay as a long-term employee in part-time positions will help with good morale and reduce or eliminate training expenses for employee turnover. Benefits will also decrease employees coming to work ill and possibly infecting others. Please consider providing some type of paid-off benef, paid-time-off benefits for part-time employees. Part-time staff work just as hard and deserve compensation for their hard work. They should be compensated when personal issues arise or when they are ill. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Vicki Rich.
Moving on, unfinished business. I'm gonna talk a little bit here about animal control and some of the different things that I've been involved in, so we met with some of the different people that have been in attendance here, we've had meetings with the sheriff. Going back to May eighteenth, we first went on a tour of the facilities in Washtenaw County, which is a, which is the Washtenaw, here-on-valley facility, thank you, and then we went to Macomb, myself, Greg, and Carl.
Carl.
Took that road trip, okay, so we got a chance to look at those facilities. I had a follow-up meeting with the Macomb County Animal Control Director, the Macomb County Humane Society, and the Lapeer County Animal Director down in Macomb, okay? These are some of the different places that, the names are given to me from some of the different groups, you need to go look at these different places, okay? We went on a tour of the Lapeer County facility, Commissioner Greitop, Commissioner Tompkins, and myself. Lapeer County's probably a much more comparable situation with us budget-wise, size of county, you know, those types of things. We recently went to Genesee County, and we met with two of their board members, their board chairman, one of the other individuals, the person that runs the shelter, their volunteer coordinator, and their assistant administrator, Howard, Carl, and myself, okay? So, these are all very similar to where the county actually runs the facilities, there's different things throughout the state, there are some where the counties work very closely with the Humane Society, their local Humane Society, it's kind of a hybrid, and I know some of you had the meeting with a gal from the state, Carrie, I know you meet with her on a regular basis, probably been in four meetings with the sheriff and stuff, and what I really think we need to do is perhaps to go out for some requests for proposals, to draft an RFP, now, don't ask me what that RFP's gonna look like right this second, okay? But a lot of times, we do this with a lot of our professional services and these types of things, and essentially, that gives people the opportunity to respond, questions, you know, how to make changes, so on and so forth, okay? So, I don't come here to these meetings and tell you that I met with these different groups, whom I've talked to, I've been doing a lot of homework on this thing, I can assure you, okay? More so than I probably have on any issue that we've had in, you know, quite some time, and we're still, I am not gonna say there's not room for improvement, it's nice to hear some of the positive changes that they are making out there, you know, recently, as far as some of these adoptions things, and you folks follow it much closer than I do, okay, I'm not gonna lie to you about that, but I, I think it would be prudent for us to go out and see what other, what other things potentially exist out there. Now, an RFP process, Carrie, I'm gonna, I don't know with the rest of the commissioners, I know we've been talking a lot about this, if this is something that the board would embrace for Carrie to, to move in that direction. We haven't done it before, I don't think it's gonna hurt anything, David?
Does this need to be a motion or anything, or you just go ahead and do it?
I just, you know, I think we can give her direction, ultimately, she's gonna bring the RFP, the language, back to this board, and then we would, you know, approve it, you know, move forward, that kind of stuff, I mean, we have. Any other comments from any other commissioners, or?
Yeah, I think it just makes sense, I'd like to see something concrete in writing, and I assume you can get together with corporate counsel and get some ideas.
Yeah, we can certainly have something to the board for your October committee meeting for you to review. I have reached out to other counties and spoken with their administrators that use a different service model that they have. a different service model, that they have went out for proposals and have had a lot of success with, you know, a humane society or a different nonprofit that will come in and run their shelter for them. So I've gotten a couple of their agreements and some examples of what we can put out for an RFP, to see if there are any groups interested in coming in and doing that.
Yeah, one thing I've found in my phone calls and some of that thing, there's different models that exist in different communities, so, different things, so, we'll go out there and see what potential's out there. David?
Just one thing, I think it's great that we're looking at all possibilities, make it a better shelter. I think we had a good shelter before, and it's improving, we've made a lot of improvements with euthanasia and those type of things, and kill rates and all that, continue going forward, good working as a team, and we'll get to an end product.
Bill?
I just wanna say that we have done a lot of work behind the scenes, and I know that people come here every month and address us, and it doesn't sound like we're hearing much, but there's no conversation between you and us when we're up here, that's your time to talk, and we listen, and if you think we don't, I'd like to tell you, we do listen. We have driven hundreds of miles to look at other shelters, we have been all over this part of the area to look at these different types of things. Our administration has spent countless hours chasing down what other places do around the state of Michigan, and it's coming together to the point now that it's time to put an RFP out there, request for a proposal, to see if somebody wants to come in and, and change some things for us, or help us out, or take over, there's all kinds of options, and, and I think we're open to looking at whatever is out there. And I applaud all of the commissioners that have taken part in this, it's been a long process. I applaud you guys for sticking with, you know, with your beliefs also, but I, I think the guys, Jeff especially, Jeff's got a thousand miles on his truck.
One thing I would do want to touch-
Never once hit a dog or a cat while he was driving, neither did Jeff.
One thing I do wanna touch is on the shelter, because I think all the commissioners got an opportunity recently to tour the shelter, we went through there. And this isn't knocking other shelters, but going to Lapeer, going to Macomb aesthetically and these, our shelter is not a rat hole, okay? So when people tell you how lousy and how bad it is, the location, I've been to these other places, that is not a bad facility. And I think, you know, Duke, you were the first one, you hadn't been there, you knew we're on the board, you went through there, and you thought it was-
I was impressed.
You thought it was a dungeon, you know, as far as it looks like.
Yes, that's all I'd ever heard, is the negatives.
We have put a lot of money in that particular, I can tell you when I first got on the board, it was a rat hole, don't get me wrong. We've put a lot of money into that shelter, you know, over, you know, X amount of years and stuff, so. So we're gonna defer to Carrie and have her, you know, work on some stuff to bring it back to us, and then, you know, start the process.
The, just, just a comment about the visit to Genesee County, particularly impressed with the volunteer coordinator. And, you know, those are, I mean, there are things that I'm sure we could do to working with the sheriff, to tweak the operation out there, and having that volunteer coordinator impressed me. The other thing that I was interested, well, thought was kind of interesting, the person managing the, the animal shelter in Genesee County was a former deputy sheriff.
Lieutenant in the sheriff's department out there. Okay, anything else? Duke?
Yeah, I just wanted to kinda expand on the visit I did have there. My first time, I've been in St. Clair County my whole entire life, and that was my first time ever being in there, and I was impressed, I thought it was clean, neat, organized, and the pets all seemed fine to me, but I concur with what everybody's, the direction we're going, and thank for, unfortunately, I wasn't able to tour all the other facilities.
You got a real job.
I got, yeah, I got somewhere else to be, but thank you for all who did, though.
Okay.
So, I hope when we go for this RFP, that, that we get something substantive, that, that we have somebody that's interested in my, we as a county need to have animal control, right? So we're gonna continue to run animal control.
We have to do the enforcement and the licensing.
The enforcement and the licensing, so we're gonna continue to do that, but we have the facility, we have the building, if somebody wants to take over the shelter situation. Now, I don't think it's gonna be just Julie from down the street that's gonna come in and has never done this, is gonna say, "I wanna try this," but there's gotta be some good, I've been to Sanolat County, we have a cottage across from the Humane Society's new putting-for-paws fundraising event, that they're gonna put up a $3.8 million building, and they, they have a no, they, Sanolat County's a no-kill county from the Humane Society portion. The sheriff's department still puts certain animals down, and we will continue to do that. When somebody brings a animal that's been hit by a car, I mean, we're still gonna have that responsibility and, and still be doing those things. So hopefully, we don't, there again, we're not gonna tomorrow morning put this thing out and publish it, we've gotta take time and make sure that we have everything put in place that needs to be there. I don't really know what the timeline is, I imagine it's a couple months to get it prepared and go through legal counsel and-
It's probably about a 30-day deal, you usually put an RFP out, it takes 30 days for kind of respondent, you gotta give everybody opportunities, you gotta let people that have any interest tour the facilities, you know, go through, that kind of stuff.
Right.
So there, there's process, it's not, this isn't pick up the phone and, you know, a two-day deal. But, and I'm gonna, and we're gonna encourage the assistance of some of your groups in there to help us through this journey too, you know, I mean, we're going to, we're not the dog experts by any stretch sitting up here, so. Okay?
Good, it's a good start.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on, new business. Item number A, the approval of the county disbursements, 2017.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the August 2017 county disbursements in the amount of $31,111,750.92.
Support? Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item B, the childcare fund budget.
I move to approve the 2017-18 childcare fund budget in the amount of $6,459,255.46.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item C, the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant for the St. Clair Community, St. Clair County Health Department and Medical Examiner.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the grant application for the St. Clair County opioid surveillance dashboard in the amount of $75,000.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item E, contract approval for Patagonia Health Systems. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped a gun, the Council on Aging Membership Applications.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to appoint the Commission on Aging Linda Schmidt, representing District One for the remainder three-year term expiring 12/31/19. Carol Ann Masella, representing District Six for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 12/31/18, and to nominate Sharon DeFever and Bonnie Bracken as candidates for a member-at-large position expiring 12/31/19.
Support.
Discussion. Got ballots? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So now we've got a vote on the at-large position.
It's that secret your name's in it.
Sharon DeFever, Sharon DeFever, Sharon DeFever, Sharon DeFever, Sharon DeFever and Sharon DeFever.
Okay, it's the at-large position.
Six, zero.
Okay, moving on, item E, the contract approval request for the Patagonia Health Systems.
I would like to move the approval of the agreement with the Patagonia Healthcare System for electronic medical record management service for a five-year term in the amount of $322,084.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item F, the contract approval request for Securus Technologies.
I make a motion to approve the agreement with Securus Technologies for inmate phone systems for a term of 36 months.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item G, the 2017 Public Guardian St. Clair County CMH Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve fiscal year 2017 Public Guardian Agreement with St. Clair County Community Mental Health in the amount of $54,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item H, 2018 Secondary Road Patrol Grant Application.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the fiscal year 2018 Secondary Road Patrol Grant Application in the amount of $135,207.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? 2018 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the fiscal year 2018 Traffic Enforcement Program Grant Application in the amount of $64,826.
Support. Second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item J, the Aeronics Advisory Board Reappointments.
Chairman Bohm, I would move to reappoint Robert Benetz, North Representative, and David Corby, West Representative, to the, to the Aeronics Advisory Board for each a three-year term expiring 9/30/2020.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item K, the Bioreactor Component Installation Project Change Order Number Two.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the Bioreactor Component Installation Project Change Order Number Two in the amount of $14,050.
Support.
I'm gonna tell a quick little story unrelated, well, it's related to this, I had to share with Greg. So we're at our meeting last night out in Greenwood, and this woman says, "I see you guys take trash there, they turn it into power at our landfill, and they power up the, the hall in Greenwood Township." Is that what?
She thought they were taking the Canadian trash to Greenwood, they were burning it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Canadian trash to Greenwood.
Great, that's, she thought it was the Canadian trash that came into Greenwood Energy Center, and they converted it into electricity. So she, partly right, right, I mean, 'cause we do take trash and turn it into-
Yeah, it doesn't go to Greenwood.
Nothing gas, which goes into the grid.
But then I tried to clarify the thing, and she said, "No, I read it in the newspaper," and then, I'm not gonna say we argued, I said, "Trust me, if there's one thing I know a lot about, it's garbage, and that's not how it works." And I had to explain the bioreactor, and it goes into the grid and the megawatts.
And it still didn't matter.
It still didn't matter, she still wanted to get the article and bring it back to me.
I was gonna say, but it was in the paper.
She said, "I'm gonna get the article and bring it back to you."
I just thought it was kinda cute.
This, uh, electricity anywhere is put into a grid system, and our county, it's been a great plus for the county, and I believe we are generating $800,000 out of that a year, is that the current figure?
Correct.
Approximately that we are getting from our trash, we feed that in, it gets methane gas, feeds two generators, and that gets into the Detroit Edison Lines, and we have a great contract with them, we got about 14 years left?
Somewhere in there, yeah. But she didn't believe me, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item L, the Columbus County Park Playground Equipment Installation.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement with Pencera LLC for the playground equipment installation at Columbus County Park in the amount not to exceed $68,846.
Support.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item M, the AT&amp;T Internet Contract.
I move to approve the agreement with AT&amp;T for upgrading internet service in the amount of $26,400.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item N, the Blue Water Convention Center Catering Agreement Template.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the Blue Water Convention Center Catering Agreement Template.
Support.
Um, any discussion on this, Bill?
Yep.
Yes.
I, I just wanna say how impressed I was with how in-depth this particular piece went. I mean, they, they had pictures of every type of table available, how you set it up, the proper way to do this, how you serve from the left, you take from the right, unless it's a drink, you serve it the other way, it's just the in-depth pieces that they put into this thing to do it the right way. It sounded very professional, and I was real pleased to see that we're moving in the direction we're moving over there. I think it's really great stuff.
Howard?
I, I concur with everything that Commissioner Greitop said. In addition to that, the fact that it's written in such a way, that if there's any catering service out there that wants to get involved, it tells them exactly what they have to do, what's expected of them, and if they agree to those conditions, you know, they, they have an opportunity to perhaps provide that catering service at our convention center.
I think it defined it very well, I don't think they left too many gray areas.
Very pleased.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item O, the Day Treatment Night Watch Site Wetland Mitigation Expansion Project.
Chairman Bohm, I would move to approve the contract for the clearing and grading of the day treatment slash night watch mitigation site to raymond excavating in an amount not to exceed $137,500.
Second?
Discussion. Been a long time coming, gentlemen, that's probably about an eight-year thing in the works. I mean, we talked about that.
I think they started that when I first came on the board.
I've been here seven, so.
My hair turned gray in that.
Mine fell out.
I had hair.
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Item P, the Medicare Advantage Renewal.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the 2018 Medicare Advantage Plan as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item Q, the Community Mental Health Board Appointment.
At this time, I'd like to move to appoint Jackie Bly, representing District One, to the Community Mental Health Board for the remainder of a three-year term expiring March 31st of 2018.
Support. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item R, the Wetlands Boardwalk.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the change order for the Blue Water River Walk Interpretive Walkway in the amount of $2,386.
Support.
Discussion.
Uh, I don't know how many commissioners have had a chance to do the river walk all the way down to the end and, and check out the, the trail over the wetlands, it, it is spectacular, it's-
I believe they have a open house coming real soon, some sort of-
Yeah, 5:30, I was just gonna announce it, September 27th, that 5:30 is the ribbon cutting down there.
Well, with construction was going on, I found some old railroad spikes.
Yeah? Bling.
The, you just have to be careful with your teeth when you're driving to get down there, it's such a rough area.
Yeah, the parking, but I'll tell you what, think about that, was an old, what, CN train switching yard at one time, David?
Guess what, it was, back, history, I used to be the track supervisor, so, I oversaw the yard, and I was responsible for all-
the yard, and I was responsible for all the maintenance on the rail.
A lot of the pollution.
Yeah, that whole area.
A lot of the pollution there was probably your fault then?
So much.
I'm sorry, I could hear you.
So much. Unbelievable.
Selective hearing.
If you look at those old pictures to what it looks like today.
It's beautiful.
Public access. All the credit to Ancheson, you know, Venture Community Foundation and everybody. It's pretty awesome what they've done down there, and county's participation too.
It definitely shows what can happen when you have a collaborative effort between, you know, an individual, like Ancheson Ventures and the Community Foundation, and the County Park and Rec, all working together to do this. And I'm guessing probably by next summer, some of the pavilions and park facilities will be incorporated in the other part of the facility. So stay tuned, more to come.
Still got a roll call on that, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greitath?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes. Item 12, Administrator's Report.
Well, first, update on our impromptu fire drill. Our Buildings and Ground Superintendent did pop in. He did let me know it was a false alarm. Everything has been corrected, and that's why the fire department did not respond, because our security company was monitoring it. They could tell what the false alarm was, so they called them off. Our text to 911 is now available for all phone carriers as of last week. So residents are now able to text 911 instead of making a phone call. In order for that to work, they must use the texting system that came with their phone. Any free text apps or third-party apps you download do not work for the text to 911. And our dispatch center is recommending people call first if you can, but if you have to text as a second option, if you're unable to call, then to do that.
Okay.
Our County Smart 911 program is kind of off to a pretty good start. We have over 460 residents that have set up profiles for their homes. Our dispatch center is putting together some marketing and promotional materials. So I'm asking, when you're out and about, or if you're out speaking at groups, please remind everybody that Smart 911 is available and encourage them to sign up. If someone would like a presentation for their business, or have someone come out and help them, show them what it can do for them to set it up, then members of our dispatch center would be happy to do that as well. For businesses, it does offer a lot of benefits. They can set up different profiles, locations of certain things in their buildings. So, you know, if there's hazardous material stored in certain areas, it helps the first responders navigate that and rescue people more quickly.
Carrie, have we set something up with the schools already? Do you know?
I have reached out to a couple of the school districts from contacts I know, and they were interested in them. So I gave them our dispatch director's name to get more information on how to do it and what it could do to the schools. I know they have instances, like with the coll at SC4. If someone calls, no matter where they are on campus, it always shows the address of one building. So if someone calls 911, they don't have a way of knowing their exact location on campus. So linking different phone numbers with different buildings in a Smart 911 profile could help first responders get there faster.
I actually talked to, talking about 911, I talked to the Marine City Police Chief here the other day, and everything's working good down there now. We've got all the bugs worked out. A lot of it just had to do with reprogramming some stuff, to be quite honest. It wasn't necessarily a coverage area as much as some of the technical pieces. So they're working with some of these other departments that are having, and there's not even a lot of them, but some of the other ones that are having some difficulties with this thing, so.
I was down there when he did that. It was a pretty simple process. It was just a question of toggling some switches in the opposite direction, and things worked out very well.
Okay.
Last week, myself and Commissioner Heidemann attended a meeting put together by our Health Department and facilitated by Dave Struck in our Planning Department to begin to put together our Community Health Improvement Plan based on the results that Dr. Merkentump presented to you a month or two ago regarding the survey they had. There was probably about 30 to 40 members there from various groups throughout the county that will be working on identifying goals, strategies, and measurables to improve our community's health outcomes.
Just a comment about that. One of the areas that I'm kind of concerned about, well, not kind of, a whole lot concerned about, and that is what is happening to the vaccination rates in St. Clair County. During the 60s and 70s-
That 1860s?
Eighties, somewhere around. The vaccination rates in this county were excellent. And we saw that many communicable diseases literally dropped down to zero, like mumps and measles and, you know, the common things that you anticipate. Since then, with the waiver programs, some of the parents are not getting their children vaccinated. And you can see the curve starting to go up. Now, my concern is that, you know, people haven't seen the effects of some of these diseases, you know, like hearing loss because of mumps, or actually children dying because of a lack of getting a shot for the measles. And they just go in and go over, you know, the vaccination rate. I doubt if there's anything in science, certainly medical science, that's been studied more extensively over the last 200 years than vaccinations. And why a parent would choose to put their children at risk, it's just something I don't understand. I know these folks would certainly not put their dog or cat at risk.
I can't be pressed on vaccination, because if all of them were to be dead by now, they would kill them.
Well, there might be a medical reason for that. But the point I'm trying to make is that for those children that certainly should have the vaccine, parents need to get out there and get vaccinated. And then I'd recommend that all of the old folks on this board get their flu shot.
Just on a, because I grew up on military bases, 16 years. We had to go to Japan back then in 1966, and I think I was nine years old, but I would have been 10. But anyways, I had to get 24 shots out at Selfridge Airport Base before we could fly out. My younger brother, he was born in '64. He had to get 48 because he had to get the booster shots. So I had to get the boosters. I already had the previous, but 24 shots at the one time, and that was like within a week or two before we flew out. Which pincushion you want, Eddie?
You went there like this.
Okay. Any other miscellaneous business? Actually, Administrator's Report.
Yes, I didn't think I was done yet.
Sorry, Howard.
We have begun negotiations with all 20 of our bargaining units right now, and we are hoping to have all of those wrapped up prior to the end of the year and your last meeting in December. So expect to see quite a few contracts coming to you in December for your approval. And last, just a reminder that next Friday on September 29th is the library's 100th Anniversary Gala Celebration. It will be at the Blue Water Convention Center at 4 o'clock till 8 o'clock. That's it.
Okay. Motion to receive and file Administrator's Report.
Miscellaneous business.
Motion to receive and file Administrator's Report.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Miscellaneous business.
I just have one. If you follow the city of Memphis, which is half of it is in the St. Clair County, they have a police chief, and their police department was shut down for approximately half a year. And the police chief that came in there did a fantastic job. He is moving to Grand Rapids, and they've had a lot of response. So whoever's coming in there, he really fixed the city up and got it very community-friendly with the police department. And they're getting a lot of response now for applicants to take over his position. The guy they had did a great job.
Okay. Receiving file.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and file all packets and all information present.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.